Yes, you, everybody's here.
Okay.
All right. Luna, if you'll get us started with the etiquette for our town hall. Go ahead and do that.
Yeah, absolutely. But thank you, everybody, for joining us today. We're so happy to have you. We're just going to go through a few points and some tips on how to structure your best viewing. And the first thing is quick, send last clearly that now and just change that to however you would like it.
Hey, Luna, I am going to jump in and just suggest that you mute all while you do this so that we don't get the sound from everybody else's speakers.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. One moment. Okay, I think I did it. There we go. Okay, moving on. If you're not presenting or speaking, please go ahead and just mute or turn off your microphone and unmute yourself if you are going to speak, like in the breakout room or the community discussion. Avoid any noisy activities like typing while you are speaking and your microphone is on or any background noise. Turn off your camera if you need to move away and tend to business outside of the meeting. Type any questions you have into the chat box. Use the raise hand feature in any portions of the town hall where you would like to speak or ask a question. We'll go through how to do that next. And then be sure to participate and share during your respective breakout room session. Your feedback will help us very, very much. So please be sure to do that. Okay, so here, I want to remind everybody. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but we're doing simultaneous interpretation for this meeting in Spanish. So I'm going to show you quickly how to turn that on if you want to do that. And I'm also going to say this again in Spanish language. So on the lower right-hand side of your screen, there should be a little icon that looks like a globe. It says interpretation. You should click on that and then it will give you the option to switch to the Spanish channel. And you should now be listening to our two fantastic interpreters, Jose and Laura, on that channel. Now I'm going to say it in Spanish. Este ayuntamiento está siendo proveído en el lenguaje de español a través de interpretación. Para escuchar el ayuntamiento en español, por favor, sigue las siguientes instrucciones. En la parte, en la parte de abajo a la derecha de su página, verá un icono que se llama interpretación. Haga clic en ese icono y le va a dar la opción de cambiarse al canal de español. Y ahí estará escuchando a nuestros interpretadores Jose y Laura, que nos están acompañando durante el día de hoy. Okay. And this is just a quick how-to on how to raise your hand. You can look in the participants button down below on your menu. And then on the bottom of that, there should be a little blue icon that says raise your hand. If you click on it, the host and all of us will be able to see it. And we'll make a note and make sure that you get your chance to speak. And the final recommendation that we're going to make tonight is that for the mayor's address, we're going to stop sharing our presentation. And if you wish to see the mayor's address in a larger format, we recommend that you go to the upper right-hand side of your screen and select speaker view. And this will allow you to put the mayor's video front and center so you can really take that in a lot better. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Shannon Bugs. Shannon?
Now, I thought I had gotten that done properly. I apologize, everyone. Welcome to our very first virtual town hall in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This evening, we have in attendance with us the residents of the Aleve-Westwood Complete Communities, as well as the Complete Communities for Fort Ben Houston, Cashmere Gardens, Magnolia Park Manchester, and Sunnyside. Also joining us on the call are our city partners here at the city in the mayor's office. We, of course, have Mayor Turner and several of his directors. But we have with us as well Councilmember Carla Cisneros, as well as Aleve ISD trustee Natasha Butler. We have representatives from the Department of Neighborhoods, including Director Takasha Francis, as well as the Director of the Planning and Development Department, Director Margaret Wallace-Brown. I am Shannon Bugs, Director of the Mayor's Office of Complete Communities, and we are all very excited to have you here. We are, in fact, through the Complete Communities Initiative, which Mayor Turner started in August, April of 2017, partnering so many different organizations here in the city of Houston, including Metro. And we have with us this evening Metro's Chief Innovation Officer, Kimberly Williams. They have representatives from MB Anderson, UNICEF, and Urban Harvest. And we thank all of those community partners who have helped us move along. Mayor Turner's initiative that deals with equity and pushes more resources into neighborhoods that have been under-resourced for too long. And this is a particularly important time to be doing that work because our pandemic has let us see just how challenging all of the disparities are for the residents in our most under-resourced neighborhoods. Our very able hosts this evening are the Bloomberg Associates team. And Bloomberg Associates, Luna is a member of that team. Bloomberg Associates is the philanthropic consulting arm of Bloomberg Philanthropies. And they have been partnering with mayors around the world since 2014 to help improve the quality of life in residents in cities that they... And there's someone who's going to need to be muted. Can we do a mute all? Luna, are you able to mute all?
Torsha Johnson, perhaps? Can you mute yourself? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I can move through this. I can. So, in fact, this was one of the points I wanted to make, that doing all of this through virtual town halls reemphasizes the importance of transparent and authentic communications. And sometimes our communications get blocked by a little bit of chatter, right? And we have to clear that out in order to get to the substance of what we're all trying to communicate with each other. So it's been challenging in our remote world to get back to the essence of what we've been able to do in the real world. But we thank all of you for coming out this evening to help us in this virtual town hall, to reconnect to the work of Complete Communities, but also to learn more about how our city has been responding to the COVID-19 challenge. In April of 2020, Mayor Turner did start the Health Equity Response Task Force, an initiative, as a vital component of the overall city of Houston's COVID-19 response and recovery. He started this initiative and task force as a way of pushing more resources into our neighborhoods that have the most vulnerable and at-risk populations. He asked five members of his office, his division directors, to lead this effort by implementing his vision and support that he is demanding of all departments to give to our most under-resourced neighborhoods. And those office division directors are Marissa Aho, our Chief Resilience Officer, Janice Weaver, our Director of Community Relations, Juliette Zepet, our Director of Education, and Susan Christian, our Director of Special Events, who handles much of the logistics behind our testing centers and many of the other initiatives that we're doing, as well as me. Our mayor, his mayor appointees to the HER Task Force are represented by 50 different civic leaders who are medical specialists, public health professionals, communications creatives, data scientists, technology experts, and faith leaders. And the HER Task Force is addressing the health inequities and access by accelerating our data-driven, targeted, and rapid response for the residents in 22 super neighborhoods that we prioritized for this response based on our CDC social vulnerability data, as well as other information about the lack of resources in those neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods include Acres Home, Denver Harbor, East Tex, Jensen, Fifth Ward, Gulfton, Independence Heights, Cashmere Gardens, Sunnyside, and Third Ward. So the Complete Communities are there, but there are other neighborhoods from that 22. Our Chief Recovery and Response Officer, Marvin Odom, is leading the city's coordinated response to the public health crisis and our economic downturn caused by our global, by the global coronavirus pandemic. So the HER Task Force so far has achieved several things. And Luna, if you'll go to the next slide. We've distributed more than 360,000 masks that were acquired by donation and purchased by the HER Task Force and helped to be distributed by city council members, faith community leaders, and nonprofit service providers. And they have been distributed in every city council district, all of the Complete Communities, as well as the Task Force 22 Priority Neighborhoods. The city's Health Department has had assistance from the Task Force and private companies in getting 38 free testing sites opened. And those sites have included areas in Acres Home, Cashmere Gardens, Magnolia Park Manchester, Sunnyside, and Third Ward, some of our Complete Communities. As you'll see on this chart, more than 1,045 COVID-19 tests have been provided to Houston's homeless population. And we have been getting food and supply deliveries throughout the city of Houston through the work of the mayor's office. The Houston Parks and Recreation Department has pushed out more than 68,000 summer meals to residents in need. And the Houston Health Department, through Meals on Wheels and other food distribution programs, have distributed more than and delivered 407,000 meals. So these are activities that will continue to be underway. We will continue to find ways of getting more free COVID-19 testing sites into the communities that are most in need of it. With or without federal support, Mayor Turner is pushing to get more federal support. And FEMA has agreed to stay for another two weeks, but we can use all of your advocacy to get the federal government to stay and helping with this. We've also been able to get free financial counseling services through virtual meetings to people through our professional financial counseling program with the Houston Financial Empowerment Centers. There'll be more information about that later. We're also developing a small business support program. And we are looking at figuring out ways of getting more meals distributed throughout the city of Houston to those who are most in need. And our education group, the Public Health Education Subcommittee, has launched a Community Health Education Fellows Program to get young, opportunity youth into jobs where they can learn about being public health counselors and getting them certified and trained to do that work. We will keep expanding our mask up campaign as a way of getting more direct outreach into our 22 priority neighborhoods. And we are going to continue all of the work on the food and mask distribution. Next slide. And those are, I just went through all of those, so I have not got on my next slide. Let's go to the next slide, which is our biggest challenges ahead. Remain working out solutions for childcare. Pushing forward on addressing food insecurity and housing insecurity. Mayor Turner is diligently working on how we can get more of our homeless neighbors into permanent housing. We are also facing mental health challenges throughout the city because being isolated from each other for so long has its consequences. And our faith community leaders team are developing a town hall to look at that particular subject right now, how we deal with mental health in the time of COVID. We are also looking at the technology access problems that we are having. Too many children were not able to continue school. Too many workers were not able to telecommute because they didn't have secure and stable internet access. So we're working on those issues. Small business instability, we've got to find ways of supporting our small businesses, and of course, unemployment. So there are many challenges ahead, but we are collaborating with the county to do this work together. So with that, I'm going to now ask Director Margaret Wallace-Brown to please share with you a little bit more about what we've been doing specifically through the Complete Communities process during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Director Bugs. I am so grateful that all of you have decided to spend an hour or two with us tonight to go through this with us. We believe this is very important and we are grateful that you are with us. As you, many of you know, Complete Communities is Mayor Turner's hallmark initiative to revitalize Houston's most underserved communities. And within these communities, we see a great devastation from this pandemic. This mental health crisis is really showing the disparities in communities that are resourced versus those that are not. And so the HER Task Force has been established to help focus some of the work on the more, on communities that need the support more than others. And the work we're doing with Complete Communities as we wrap up our second round, can you go to the next slide, please? As we wrap up our second round, I'm going to really spend just a moment to explain to you what we did in the first round. So as you recall, we had five original communities that we worked with. They were Acres Home, Third Ward, Sunny, Third Ward, Second Ward, Near North Side, and... Oh my heavens, I've just totally forgotten the last one, and I apologize for that. But we are now working on our 10 communities, and we are wrapping up our action plans for those. This is a, an effort that is driven by the residents and the communities and one that we listen, we are listening to you and we are writing down what you all are preferring. Many of these issues are COVID-related issues, health access, food security, open spaces, civic engagement. We are listening and we are looking for ways to resolve these issues in your community. And they will be in the action plans that we'll be providing, that we'll be finishing up later this year with, this summer with your support. Now is the time for you to leverage your power. We want to hear from you. We want to hear what you believe is important for your community and how we can build the relationships that work for you to address these urgent needs. So we're not stopping tonight. This is just the first step. I want you to keep looking for more opportunities where we can find, we are going to keep looking for more opportunities where we can align investments, and we want to keep hearing from you on what you believe you need for your communities. Can we go to the next slide, please? The next meetings, we have, we have seven, six more meetings scheduled taking place over the next month. We will be, there will be a virtual open house format where we will be reviewing what we've heard from you before and listening for more information that we may have missed and reviewing the documents, the draft documents as they stand right now. So I want you to continue to participate. I want you to show up to these six meetings and really help us put the finishing touches on these documents that are so important to the future of your communities and that help us as public servants provide you the services that you need. So thank you. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Director Francis, who is going to take us to our next step. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Wallace-Brown, Director Bugs, for those wonderful introductions into Complete Communities. As you already know, guys, tonight, we have to have an agenda and an order so that we can be most efficient. And so I want to just quickly go over our format for the next hour. We're going to review the survey response. About two weeks ago, there was a response that went out to Houstonians regarding some of the services, city services, and how COVID-19 is affecting particular neighborhoods, what are some of the issues that are actually showing up. And so the survey response is going to be provided by Clyde after Mayor Turner gives his remarks. You'll have an opportunity tonight to also talk about and engage in short dialogue in separate breakout groups. And then, of course, come back and report not only the issues, but then solutions that you're coming up with in those particular groups. We want you to talk with your communities specifically about work that needs to be done, of course, as well as bringing back those ideas, which are the basis for the Complete Communities program, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of people and communities that really need that it's historically under-resourced and are feeling COVID in a very significant way. And so, of course, we've already mentioned him a couple of times, but it is my absolute pleasure to introduce him to the conversation, Mayor Sylvester Turner, to give his address to us this evening. You'll have a few minutes after his presentation for us to take a couple of questions. But if we're not able to get to your questions tonight, we're taking note of those and we will provide responses. So without further ado, Mayor Sylvester Turner.
Let me thank you, Takasha Francis, and I'm hoping everyone can, can hear me clearly. And certainly to Director Shannon Bugs and Director Margaret Wallace-Brown. Let me thank you. But most importantly, let me thank all of you who are part of this virtual, I guess you could say, town hall, hall meeting. I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Carla Cisneros again and trustee Natasha Butler. I saw Dr. Shaw, and I know the representatives from the American Heart Association and so many others that are part of, part of this virtual meeting. Can't say enough for Bloomberg Associates. They have just been a tremendous partner. So if you will, if you kind of give a hand to Bloomberg Associates, really appreciate, appreciate them and the collaboration that, that we're having with them. Let me be fairly brief because the heart of this is, is the community engagement. That's what Complete Communities is all about, conversing with people in our respective communities and neighborhoods. And so let me just say good evening and, and thank all of the participants and residents of Aleve-Westwood, Fort Ben Houston, Cashmere Gardens, Magnolia Park, Manchester, Sunnyside. I don't think I have to tell you, we're all in a, kind of like a new world, and we are all getting accustomed to communicating in a virtual environment. It's kind of different. But what it demonstrates is that even with, in the midst of a pandemic, you know, the work still has to go on, and we still have to develop and transform these communities. And so I appreciate your willingness to try this out. And I look forward to the time when we can get, get back together again. Quite frankly, this is a very tough time thing we are going through together. And I know you are suffering with all the uncertainties and impositions and the inconveniences. In Houston, our cases in terms of COVID-19 continue to go up. Unfortunately, the rate of positive COVID-19 cases in our city rose 38% between June 1st and June 28th. And today, the Houston Health Department is reporting 280 new, new positive cases. Tragically, 224 Houstonians have died after contracting this disease. But when you compare it to other cities across the, across the country, I will tell you that that is still relatively low. Though you don't want to lose one single person. Houston is not unique in this, in this experience, but we are committed to making this a unique, for having a unique response by talking, by taking on these issues straight ahead and dealing honestly with the root cause of why we exist. Now, COVID-19 is an equal opportunity abuser, but it's having a disproportionate impact on communities of color in our city. And consequently, we've put forth this task force, the Health Equity Response Task Force, that is particularly placing emphasis on our Complete Communities. Because when it comes to, I would tell you, people of color, Hispanics, African Americans, people in our low-income communities, communities that have been underserved and under-resourced, the impact is disproportionate. And so we want to do everything to equip people, residents, businesses in these communities with what they need. And that's why I call on all of my departments and you in the community to be a part of the Complete Communities in the first place. Because what we have seen is that the disparity has just not been unveiled with this particular pandemic. But even with Hurricane Harvey and with other events within the city of Houston, many of the same communities are facing these disproportionate impacts. And so we need to invest in these communities in very real ways to transform them for the better. Each community is different. Each has its own set of needs. Sunnyside is different from, let's say, Magnolia Manchester. Magnolia Manchester is different from Acres Home. Acres Home is different from Cashmere Gardens. Cashmere Gardens is different from Aleve-Westwood, and the list goes on and on. And so the essence of Complete Communities is to customize those particular strategies for that particular community and not try to deal with them all in the same way. But to deal with them, but the common denominator is making investments that will transform them all for the better, to make them sustainable, not just doing something that will benefit them for today and for this moment, but to make them sustainable communities for the, for the long term. If we do that, when other pandemics come our way or there are other events, shocks, and stresses that come our way, we'll be in a much better position. And I would tell you, it will benefit neighborhoods and quite make, and for, so for Director Francis, with her department, Department of Neighborhoods, the need won't be as great, and we can shift Takasha and her employees to some other area because we would have transformed these communities for, for the better. That's, that's the goal, and it's, it's very ambitious. And so I want to thank you for being, for being a part of it. If there was any question about the need for a strategy like Complete Communities, it's been answered after, in dealing with this pandemic and quite frankly, the aftermath of George Floyd's death. If there was any question, if, if any question to get, for example, others, but then our business community, corporate community, and endowments to convince them to invest in real dollars in our Complete Communities. You know, I think, you know, we have seen that over the last several weeks. And so the investment need to be very, very, very real. So we are more committed, which means that even though we can meet in person, the needs of the, of these particular communities do not stop because we cannot meet in person, which means we have to operate with the greatest degree of intentionality. We have to make sure that there are no second-class communities within our city. Everyone deserves to be treated with decency and respect. And everyone's community needs to be a community that we value and cherish and that we invest in. So that's the goal. Even though we're, we're, we're in the midst of this particular storm, we're going to press forward because the work still needs to get done. And quite frankly, it cannot be delayed. So let me thank all of you who have joined in this virtual experience. I hope you will leave knowing that we will find a way to commit, to continue to have the community engagement and community, and continue to impress on people that be invested in these communities. Cannot wait until this virus is over. We have to do it right now. And so thank you for your attention. All of the directors, thank you to Bloomberg and Associates. Thank you to the speakers that you will hear from. Thank you. But most importantly, from, to those of you from all of these communities, let me say thank you and thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your opening remarks. And so we have a few comments over in the chat that we want to address, as well as a couple of questions for you to address for Houstonians. One of the comments that I mentioned is the unemployment rate. And we do realize that unemployment is outside of the purview of the city's ability to control. But what currently would you say to Houstonians who are concerned about unemployment during these times? And what actively is the administration doing to work with state agencies like the Unemployment Commission and others to help bring some level of relief for Houstonians who are dealing with that issue?
And looking, and the, the unemployment situation is directly tied to, to what's happening, let's say, with our businesses and, and the impact that this virus is having. A healthy environment is conducive to a healthy business environment. So keeping people safe, you can't have businesses open, for example, if their employees and their customers are not safe. So we're having to deal with this all at the same time. In March and April, we, and parts of May, we have the stay-home, work-safe order. As a result, a lot of businesses were shut down. You know, people were working remotely, things of that nature. We started to open up at the beginning of May. I think we opened up a little bit too quickly, however. And now, you know, with the rise in number of cases, we're having to in many ways kind of backtrack somewhat. But when it comes to residential and commercial construction, the city of Houston never closed. That, that part continued. For essential businesses, that continued, we continued to move forward in that, in that front. I would tell you, the sooner we can get our arms around this, this, this virus and, and manage it better, because until the vaccine comes, we're going to have... we're going to have to learn how to live with this, how to manage it so that we can minimize the impact on people's jobs, on people's businesses. Because, you know, you don't have the jobs if the businesses are not open. So we're walking, we're kind of, we're all kind of learning from this new experiment. And, and for individuals who are in marginal communities and marginal neighborhoods, the impact is, is even more. There is a greater impact there. And that's why it's just so important for us to, to wear these masks. Because if you want businesses to stay, to open and to stay shut, then it's important to put on these masks to engage in the social distancing and the proper hygiene. But this is a new experiment that we're all having to deal with. And we're just going to have to work together to make sure that we minimize the impact on, on any, on any, on any community.
You bring up a very good point, Mayor. Much to your past comments about flooding and how the city of Houston is just pre-positioned to flood. So all of our efforts are going towards mitigating those effects. COVID-19 is with us and so the only thing that we can do is exercise our own personal responsibility in mitigating the spread at this time. But there's a lot of frustration right now from citizens around masking up. And they don't understand the importance of that. And we realize that masking up alone is not the only thing that we all have to do. We have to make sure we physically distance. But can you talk with Houstonians a little bit more about that frustration over the mask requirements that are now going into effect in Harris County and how important it is for us to comply?
Yeah, sure. You know, and we have not just a part of this virtual experience. But let me tell you, it's been scientifically proven that wearing a mask does work. For those who wear the mask, the, the odds of transmitting this disease to someone else is about 3%. If you don't wear the mask, it's about 70% or more. So wearing a mask does work. This has nothing to do about, with political ideology, nothing to do with people's socioeconomic background or who you are, where you come from, whether you're documented or undocumented. It has everything to do with mitigating the risk of transmitting this virus to someone else and minimizing the risk on yourself. And I tell people all the time, if you want businesses to open up, if you want this economy to open up and remain open, a sustainable economy, until a vaccine is obtained, then it just behooves everyone to put on that mask. It shows respect, not just for yourself, but other people as well. And then, of course, the social distancing, the proper hygiene, all of those things, all of those things go, go together. And I would tell you, now if you want to shut down things, then, you know, don't wear the mask. You know, you let the positivity rate go up. For example, at the end of April, the first part of May, those people who were testing positive, that number was about 3%, a little bit more, let's say 3%, 4%, 5%. Now, those testing positive, that number now is more than 13%. So it's going up. And there are more people, for example, that are going to our hospitals and there are more people who are in ICU beds. So it's just very important for us to realize that wearing the mask is more preventative. It mitigates the risk until such time as a vaccine comes onto the scene. Has nothing to do with saying for those who wear the mask that they are liberal, progressive or whatever. And those who don't are conservative and pragmatic, not the case. This is all about minimizing this healthcare crisis.
And sir, on the subject of masks, you know, of course, the transmission rates and the figures. This information is being provided to your administration directly from not only our health department, but would it also be the CDC? Where is a lot of the guidance?
The health community, you know, the science. This is, this is not something that, for example, that I decided that just we just need to do it because I said we just need to do it. But we, we got, we are governing the science and the medical professionals and the public health professionals that, that we have. And I think you see, the conversation is almost universal or the message is almost universal. And people are saying, wear the mask, you know, people at all different levels. So we just, the numbers, you know, tell the story. You know, the numbers are going up. Every day we're reporting new cases. Fortunately for Houston today, today, we're not reporting any new deaths. So we remain at 224. That's today. But we want to keep the fatality rate as low as possible. And we want to reduce the number of people who are testing positive. We want to keep that number low. We need to manage this virus. And look, I, I don't think anyone makes pleasure with people here in Houston on the national and, and international news talking about Houston as the new epic center, the place to watch. You know, I don't mind being first in a lot of things. I don't want to be first or second or third when it comes to this virus. In April and May, we in part were the envy of the country in terms of how we were handling this pandemic. But now you're hearing Florida, Texas, Arizona. I don't want to be, I don't want us to be in that group. So we just need to do what Houston does. And that is band together, work together. And then making sure that we don't overlook any of these communities that have been underserved. We need to make sure we provide them the resources, the mask and everything else that people need in order to keep, to keep themselves he- healthy.
All right. And sir, I know that our time is getting far spent and we won't be able to get to every question that I'm seeing coming in the chat, but we will get every question answered, if not in this moment. One last question for you, Mayor, before we sign off. And this is regarding testing, which is what you mentioned. We know that there is a great need for testing and a concern has come through that most of our testing sites are filling up rather quickly. What advice would you give to Houstonians who want to get tested? And what are we doing to make more testing available?
Yeah, and we want you to get tested. And that's whether you're symptomatic or asymptomatic. You know, the two big testing sites that we have, Butler Stadium and Del Mar Stadium. Yesterday, for example, they could, they could test 500 each maximum. Today, we've upped that number to 650 each. And so we, and we're looking to provide even more testing sites throughout the city of Houston, especially trying to get testing sites closer to the communities where people live. Ideally, we would want testing sites in any, in every one of the complete communities to make it easy and accessible. Because tech, testing is important. You need to know what your status is. Because, you know, we tell people to social, to socially distance. But I would tell you, for many people in these complete communities, it is different, it is difficult to socially distance at home. Because in many of the homes in the communities that we are talking about, there may be two and three generations living in that same home. So it's very hard to socially distance. In those case, in those situations, they really need to know what their status is. Because you don't want some person bringing it home and then giving it to their parents or their grandparents or their uncles or cousins, you name it. So testing becomes critically important. And so the goal is now to increase the number of testing sites or the capacity. And we want everyone, if you've been in close proximity with someone, if you're not feeling well, we want you to get tested. But even if you're feeling well and asymptomatic, we want you to be tested too. But the goal is to keep you safe.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate your time this evening. And I see in the chat, we've got a lot of great questions. But as I mentioned before, whatever we weren't able to address in the chat tonight, those questions will get answered. So we'll coordinate with our mayor to make sure those questions are answered. But we thank you so much for your vigorous participation. Mayor, thank you so much for your time. And at this time, I want to pass it along to Mr. Clyde Hunt III with Bloomberg, who is going to go over the survey responses that we mentioned earlier. So next slide, Clyde, take it away.
Thank you, Tekashi, and thank you again, Mayor, for that mayoral address. It's always a pleasure to be in your company. Just a moment, I'm going to pull up the slides.
While you're pulling up the slides, Clyde, I just wanted to let folks know that Bloomberg Associates did assign someone who has lived in our city, Clyde Hunt, to work on this program, project with us. When he says, it's a pleasure to be in Mayor Turner's presence, it's because he's done it more than once. So we're glad to have Clyde working with us.
Yeah, so good evening again. My name is Clyde Hunt III. I am a consultant with Bloomberg Associates. We are a pro bono consulting firm, working strictly with municipalities all over the globe. And we are certainly no stranger to, to Houston. In advance of this town hall, we shared a survey with you to analyze the effects of COVID-19 and how, how it has affected your community. It has generated over 10,000 responses and I'm excited today to share those results with you. In this first question, we wanted to know how you received the information regarding COVID-19. I should note that newspaper was not listed on here as a, as a resource and we recognize that. But from the data, it shows that the, that you all received information most through television. You can see over here, the citywide, it was going, this blue here represents the citywide results. And the other ones correspond to the other complete communities. So again, television was ranked highest, followed by social media and radio receiving the least amount of responses here. I'll leave this up for a moment for you to digest for a moment. In this next question, we wanted to analyze, of the working age adults at home, how many are considered essential workers and having to leave, tend to leave your home outside of work? You can see here that citywide average for that 10,000 group constituents was around 52%. And Fort Bend trend, trend pretty well with that citywide average. But for the other complete communities, you all were very, you all trended way above that average of 64% for Aleaf and 70% for Cashmere Gardens. That's, that's, that's important to understand as we analyze these effects of COVID on your community. This next question wants to analyze the percent of residents that leave the home less than three times per week. Again, the citywide average was around 65%. And for the most part, the complete communities trended right along with that. Forban residents tend to stay home a little bit more than the rest of the people in the complete communities through this chart. This next question really wanted to analyze in regards to that mask-up campaign, how many of you are wearing your mask? And we had a few different answers, which were listed as always, most days, some days and never. We wanted to show you all the always results. And citywide, 73% of the population always wears face covering. It's exciting to see that the complete communities were roughly around 80%, 80% and 90%. But it's also important to note the, the effects in Aleaf and Magnolia Park, especially as we go through the survey and sorry to our other questions. In this question in particular, you know, we're talking about how satisfied are you with your ability to access that said PPE? So if you remember in the previous slide, Magnolia Park, they were pretty low in their, you know, in, in, in how often they wore the mask. And it could be because they don't have access to these masks. We ranked this question from very satisfied, satisfied, neutral, dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. And we combined those satisfied results here to show you in this presentation. It seems that the majority of the complete communities are satisfied with the exception of Cashmere Gardens and Magnolia Park. This next question goes into, how satisfied are you with your access to COVID-19 testing facilities? Again, noting Cashmere Gardens and Magnolia Park, these percentages have been getting lower. And it could be due to the number of testing facilities in those neighborhoods. Citywide, you all, 31% of the community was satisfied with the access. So not a very high number, but it's important to know and think about as we plan for this next stage of work in Houston. This question here was going back to the questions we heard earlier around that customer and employee safety. Recommended best practices were, are to include wearing a face, I'm sorry, wearing a face covering, practicing social distancing, keeping clean hands. And this question wants to know, what's these in general represented the best practices between your businesses and your clients? We have four different answer choices. I'll read them out here for you. Businesses follow safe practices and clients follow safe practices? The second one was businesses follow safe practices and clients do not follow safe practices? The third one was businesses do not follow safe practices and clients follow those safe practices? And the last one was businesses and clients do not follow safe practices? 48% of the city survey showed that many people thought that businesses promoted safe practices, but the clients were not following those rules. So businesses may say, you know, maintain social distancing, keep your hands clean, but the people who go into the stores may not be wearing the mask, which is counter to what we saw earlier in, in, in that dataset. It's particularly relevant here in the Cashmere Gardens and in Fort Bend area. During COVID-19, we think it's important that you have a stable internet connection and we almost consider it essential during this time. We had four different options for this question. They were, I have a stable internet connection in my home. I have the proper technology equipment, so phone or tablet, computer. I can easily afford my internet connection and I do not have access to internet in my home. The vast majority of you responded that you have an internet connection and that connection is stable. I wanted to show that here to you. Also note, those communities that may not have the most stable internet connection, highlighting Fort Bend, Cashmere Gardens and Magnolia Park. Throughout this time, we recognize that it's very important that you have access to essential food resources. This picture, this survey question, you know, was asking you how important these resources have been to feed your family. And we had WIC, SNAP, faith-based distributions, school-based distributions, park-based distributions, the Houston Food Bank and Meals on Wheels. We ranked these from very important, slightly important, not important, unable to access and did not need. I wanted to show you those who found it important, so ranking that very important and slightly important category together. And you can see that result here. Citywide, roughly 5% need WIC. I think the most people need, the most, the most helpful services coming from these faith-based distributions, kind of across the board, particularly for the Fort Bend community. It's Meals on Wheels, while very helpful, seems to not be have much, they haven't been as essential for your communities based on this survey. In this next group of questions, I wanted to, again, show you from satisfied to very satisfied, how you all felt with access to, with the current access to different housing resources? So for instance, on, on this left chart, the question was, how satisfied are you with the resources available in your community for people facing housing instability? You can see that many people here, so the shortest, like the shorter lighter color bar, you're satisfied, and the darker color bar are those responses that were indicating to be neutral. 15%, for instance, for citywide, said they were satisfied with the resources to face housing instability. But the majority of people were, were neutral in this case, which can lead me to believe that you either did not, you know, understand, you know, what's going on in your community or you just really, just don't have, have an idea of, of, of those resources that are available. You can see how the other communities measure up against the citywide results. Sunnyside being more satisfied with those, with the housing, with resources for housing instability. On the right here, we have the same question, but how satisfied are you with the resources to support small businesses? Citywide, roughly 20% of your community is satisfied to see those for, for small, for small businesses. And that trends pretty well across the, the complete communities. In this next group of data, we wanted to know how satisfied are you with the resources for those experiencing domestic violence and for those experiencing, experiencing isolation during this time? Again, on this left chart, it seems to trend pretty well with the citywide average that, you know, roughly 12 to 15% are satisfied, but the majority of people are neutral in the that, you know, roughly 12 to 15% are satisfied, but the majority of people are neutral in this case. We go over to our isolation resources, you see the communities um are less satisfied than the city overall. And while still being somewhat neutral uh for for the rest um for 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 the rest of of that analysis. This question here wants to know how satisfied are you with the resource to support your children and youth during this uh during this time of COVID? We know people are um isolated and inside and they may need extra resources to keep them busy uh during this time. Again, citywide shows roughly 14% um are satisfied and 60% are neutral. Um it is very important to know that Kashmir Gardens here uh is a trend uh is not very happy or satisfied uh with those resources and we can talk about that more in the breakout rooms uh in in the coming moments. Over here, when when we talked about unemployment earlier, that's a huge issue, um as many people are getting uh laid off or furloughed during this time. How satisfied are you with those resources in your community to help you with employment? Uh roughly only 14% citywide are are satisfied. And um again, noting the uh how low or how this um neutral uh section here has decreased. And uh how many people could potentially be dissatisfied with those resources in our communities? We thought this question would be interesting for you all. Um it's it was um you know, how many, how comfortable are you calling HP uh calling HPD for an emergency? Um 63% of the city indicated they felt very safe. And um you can see for the complete communities how safe uh each of these communities feels uh calling HPD. Uh Sunny Side being the the least um the least uh safe, uh feeling the least safe when calling uh for uh the Houston Police Department. While Magnolia Park uh being the most uh safe when calling for uh the police department. We can again dig into this more in those uh facility discussions and in the breakout rooms. This question here was how satisfied um who whom sorry, who do you most trust um to go to for help in your community? We ranked uh from one uh to six with one uh with six being the most important and one being the least important. It's to no surprise that friends and family are the most trusted uh in a resource for residents in the community. And that's shown citywide and across the board. Um it's important, I you know, you can look at here at the government officials uh seeing it, it doesn't trend uh uh too bad. But it's just important to know that it's it turned a little bit lower and maybe there's some uh some trust building we can do as officials to uh really uh build that within our community. Moving um moving away from some of those other topics, we wanted to know how many of you were registered to vote and completed the census. Um citywide, you know, 91% of you are registered to voting, 92% have completed the census and that's trends uh pretty well. There's some work to do in some of these communities, but we have time and uh during a break today, we'll walk you through some of that. Some of what's what it what it takes to complete the census. This is the last question and it is a bit much. I do recognize that. Um the question was, how do you believe your community will fare in these areas post uh COVID-19 because of your community's uh response? I um the areas were civic engagements, economy and jobs, education, health, behavioral health, housing stability, transportation, neighborhood character, parks and community amenities, safety and food access. And there's a lot of information here. One thing that stood out to me was that we believe that we would the the community would be more civically engaged post-COVID. Um based on how uh how things are working currently in our communities. And these rankings were um from much stronger, slightly stronger, no change, slightly weaker and much weaker. We captured here and we're showing you those responses that were uh slightly and much stronger um here. Um looking ahead, um again, going back to that question around housing stability, right? Um a lot of you think that this will be weaker post-COVID, maybe with rent controls and some of those things expiring uh later on. That would that would make sense based on uh what we're seeing here in the survey results. So I want to thank you all for uh filling out the survey. Um it was again 10,000 responses, could not have been there without you. And there's some great data here to share with the uh with the hurt task force. So thank you all again. And now I want to uh turn it over to uh Krista.
Good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Krista Stoneham. I'm the Division Manager in the Mayor's Office of Complete Communities and I'm very grateful that you all have joined us here tonight. Um we're at the best part of the meeting, which is to hear from you. This is the whole point of having a virtual town hall, which is to hear directly from the community. Um the survey was great input, especially considering we had 10,000 participants. But we really want to hear directly from you um on what are your reactions to what has been said so far? Um you've heard a little bit about what the city is doing to address COVID-19. We have um the privilege of he hearing directly from the mayor as well. And we also heard a little bit about some of the survey of what um what the community said. But really, we want to hear specifically, was there something from that survey that surprised you? Um for example, um it was alarming and shocking to me that less than 20% of all the communities in citywide said that they were satisfied with employment and small business resources in the city. That kind of supports earlier what Director Bugs was saying in terms of providing more support and access to small businesses. Um but can we please go to the next slide? Thank you, the one after. But I really want to open up the opportunity to allow the group to speak. Um before we officially do, I would like to please request that um we try to use the raise your hand feature so I can see everyone who would like to speak or use the chat, feel free to use the chat room. Um also, I want to note that there may be about 10 to 15 participants who are indicated on Zoom as Luna. And as much as I I love Luna, I'm pretty sure there aren't 15 versions of y'all. So um if you're able to rename yourself, which you should be able to do by hovering over um your name and clicking the dots, um then you can revise the name to your your correct name so we can call on you. Um so with that being said, I would like to open up the discussion to the group. I think it's um gonna be a great opportunity for us to hear each other. Um there will be a breakout session, so there'll be more opportunities for engagement in the case that you weren't able um to speak in the current moment. So do I have any volunteers? I see some familiar names in the group um as well.
I can start if you want.
Yes, thank you.
So I'm Dr. Shaw. What I saw was that people are looking forward, in the survey at least, for civic engagement. Uh which was kind of a little surprise to me because I thought people would be talking about more the food, the the men mental health or medical health and and other things, but they are talking about civic engagement um and involvement of faith leaders. And I think that's something we can use in the uh Health and Equity Task Force to implement our agendas. And everybody has talked about masking, but I feel that what we miss when we talk about masking is proper masking. Uh we don't talk about the proper way of masking. You see so many people wearing a mask under the nose, which, as you know, and I'm a physician, is no good. We see people wearing cloth masks and not washing them, which is no good. So we need to, while we need to talk about masking, we need to also talk about proper masking. And lastly, uh if we can delete the word social distancing and use the word physical distancing, because we want the people to socialize, whether they are socializing by Zoom or FaceTime or whatever. Uh social distancing for some people is a little bit more traumatic than physical distancing and actually it is physical distancing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shaw. I really appreciate that feedback. I see that um there is one of the Lunas with uh who has used the raise hand feature. And then I also see um trustee Natasha Butler has also raised her hand.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, is that Mr. Downey?
Hi, how you doing? How's everyone?
Good, how about you?
Doing good. Uh dealing with Kashmir Gardens, what I've seen uh from the chart and it was quite informative uh to let us know where we are, people are becoming more and more engaged. Uh that's a given. Uh there are many Zoom calls in the community tonight. Um I'm jumping from one to the other. But one of the things I'm looking at the chart is resources for families with children. Uh you know, families feel that there's not a lot of resources for them to turn to in the community. Uh and that's something that's very important as we go forward. Speaking about testing, uh it's very important to get information out to the residents as they've had the the health departments tested at the Kashmir Multi Service, the state tested over at Kashmir Garden Elementary. And in both occasions, it's been very difficult for residents to find out about this testing until it was happening. Um and when I find out something, of course, I blast it out there, but uh that's very important. And then also, uh the re test results, people contacted, even contacted me today about their testing results as far as, "Bro, Mr. Downey, what's the number?" So it's very important to share informa information and data because it helps build, you know, not only that relationship with the residents, but you know, people need to know information. They want information, they want to know the resources in the community and it goes a long way and that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you so much, Mr. Downey. Really appreciate it. Next up is um our trustee Natasha Butler. And then um council member Cisneros and then um Deshara Crossway.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um so I have a couple of thoughts about the um survey and the results. Um so one of the things I was interested in is so will each different community be able to get their results broken down for their community? So that we can go and disaggregate the data to be able, you know, to be able to understand specifically like what's happening in our community. Because I know in specifically that um you know, we probably didn't get a lot of responses that were actually from our our real population, those families that um do not have the internet. And so um I would be interested to to see how many of them actually participated and then what were those results of the ones that participated specifically? Um and so I I will tell you that one of the things that I was really s I was really su I was surprised from was what it asked about, so where do you get your resources from? Or um who do you get your information from? In schools, it was a very low number. Um and so I'm curious as to that's, you know, obviously being the trustee and um how the information was out there. But the lastly, you know, one of the biggest issues that I saw in our community was was testing. So we do have one testing site, um but it is not a walk-up site, it's a it's a drive only. And so that has been something that we have definitely been hearing about, you know, from families in the communities of or they leave in the Westwood side. So thank you, those are my concerns.
Thank you so much. I believe next was council member Cisneros.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. So um I wanted to just talk about what surprised me about um the this the information. Um and that was the question about how what were people getting information? And um it was interesting to me to see that that television was reaching more people than anything else, followed by social media, followed by email, followed by radio. So that's really instructive. I mean, because one of the huge challenges right now is when we can't be with each other. How do you reach people, you know, and and how do you reach people that maybe weren't that engaged to begin with? You know, um you know, there's important information to share, you know, um and and for people to be able to access. So that's really helpful. We you know, we've been having conversations, you know, in my office, you know, how how we think people are tuning in the most, you know. But but that's it, to see it as data is really helpful, but but you know, for COVID resources or if it's rental assistance or if it's a computer giveaway or if it's the census, all of that's, I think, you know, that I I want to think more about television. So so thank you for that.
Thank you so much for joining us. I really appreciate it. Um I also want to um address uh the comment about the reports by community. Full reports will be provided by the community um as well as citywide. Um so next we have um Deshara Ross and then we'll have Mercedes Clark.
Hi, everyone. This is Deshara Goss, uh the Community Initiatives Manager with Fifth Ward CRC. My question, I'm sorry if I missed um the slides, just like Mr. Downey, I am hopping from call to call. Um I did, I had a question in regards to individuals with disabilities. Um I have been noticing that it is very difficult to pull up to a drive of COVID testing site. And so if it is difficult for me on two legs, I can only imagine how difficult it may be for those who have disabilities as well. And so if there is some future planning in regards to um providing assistance for those with disabilities, it would be great.
Thank you so much for your comments. Um I believe our Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities has um some outreach methods um to help that population. But I will um be sure to take back your feedback. Um Mercedes Clark?
Good evening, everyone. Um I'm with the Houston Public Library and um with Diana, I know that we've been working with the complete communities. Pre-COVID, we were actually cooperating with the action plans. And uh one of the exercises that we were doing was uh we were identifying resources inside the community who could address those needs and wants around, especially around the education piece. Um the quality of life piece, the job training, uh and it's come up in in the survey. So I I think what we have to do is, now that we have gathered all this information, um again, uh I agree completely uh with Mrs. Nettles that we do need to start finding ways of communicating these resources to the communities. Because they are saying they don't have as many resources, the resources are there. They obviously are not getting the information as to where to go to tap into those resources. And so I I think we we really need to start thinking about how we address that information gap. Um so that they can, the communities can start taking advantage of the resources out there for them.
Thank you so much. Um that's a great point and um I think that's a also a great point and um moment to pivot into our breakout room so we can continue the discussions about um the specific communities and some of the goals that they would like see. Um so um for the group, you do not have to do anything to go into the breakout sessions. Um Luna, our host, will um help to facilitate that and there will be assigned facilitators for this portion. Um in addition to the community planners, some our planning and development department will also be joining. Um so with that being said, I think we can go ahead and transition into the breakout sessions. Luna, would you like to give some instructions or are we just gonna break straight out?
Yeah, so I have them built up for the most part, so I'm just gonna open them up and it's gonna send you all an invitation to join. So go ahead and accept that invitation when it comes in. And then for the several people who are mislabeled as Luna, if you could please uh go up to the upper right-hand side of your little window and rename yourself in your correct name. That will help me put you in the correct breakout room. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and launch it now.
Welcome back, everyone. Um I believe that the breakout rooms should have closed. So now we're at the portion of report out. Um each breakout room should have identified um one volunteer that can briefly explain what's one short term and what's one long-term goal that um your group discussed. Um I'm going to go ahead and start off with Sunny Side. So can the volunteer for Sunny Side please um introduce yourself and please state your um short term and your long-term goal that you discussed from the group?
Maria, we can't hear you.
Maria, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Luna, can you see if you can unmute from your end, Maria Noguera?
Yeah, absolutely, Linda.
I don't know why it's not working. And Maria was such a good volunteer. She raised her hand immediately. She said, I'll do it.
Maria, I would like you to unmute yourself. Can you hear us?
She can hear us. We can't hear her. Lindsay, I'm Lindsay, I'm going to go over to you instead and ask you if you would, um, to report out for us.
Lindsay, will you, yeah, there you go.
Yes, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. In the Sunnyside Room, we discuss, um, oh, that a lot of essential workers in the community have had issues with getting, childcare, long-term childcare, um, during this whole COVID pandemic. And we also discussed that there needs to be an expansion of testing sites because a large population of Sunnyside walks and do not, um, have transportation or don't trust transportation in public transit. So they need testing sites within walking distance. We explored maybe churches could be an option for that.
Thank you, Lindsay. Up next, um, we have Aleve Westwood. So we're from the south side to the west side. Who's our representative from Aleve?
Hi, I'm Natasha Butler, and I'm a school board trustee in Aleve, but I'm also part of the Aleve super neighborhoods. And so I wanted to share with you some of the things that we talked about. So our most pressing, um, issue is testing, but it's not a drive-up testing. It actually is a walk-up testing for our communities. Um, our, um, residents don't always have cars, and so they need to be able to have a walk-up testing site. Um, so that is a, a big issue, um, as well as food insecurity. And, um, so our communities are actually struggling to be able to go and get to the location to go and get their food, um, as well as the internet connection. So, um, you know, well, there were families who actually had the internet, well, at the beginning of March, and now don't have internet because they can't afford to, because they're essential workers, um, as well as people who are being evicted over their rent, that even though they've, um, paid their landlord, their landlords are still evicting them to be able to, to raise more money. And then also transportation. So our families aren't able to get what to one site to the next. And so they're waiting on Metro for an hour or like an hour and a half, because they only are holding 10 seats or 15 seats when they typically hold 30. So those were some of the top issues that we talked about.
Thank you very much, trustee Butler. Next is, um, who's the next one? Is Fort Ben Houston? Who's our representative from Fort Ben? I saw Cynthia earlier.
I think it's me.
It is? Dr. Shaw?
Yes. So we talked about again testing. We talked about some other things, but the main discussion was testing. And, uh, like the previous, um, person summarized, uh, testing is a necessity, and that's what we talked about. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, uh, walking testing was one, and the other thing was, uh, that testing, uh, we need more testing, because usually the lines are up and testing sites are filled by between 10 and 12, so we need to do something about that. And lastly, uh, we feel that, uh, the 30-minute testing is the way to go, because this multiple-day testing, some people even said in our group that they got the testing result in two weeks. Uh, the multiple-day testing, there are two problems with it. One is that if somebody is working, if they are in quarantine, which they should be after the testing, they don't go to work for two days, three days, or if it's two weeks, two weeks. And if they're not working, or if they're, if they go to work defying the quarantine rule, they are going to infect others. So we need to invest on, um, the 30-minute testing, and there are quite a lot of D-approved authentic 30-minute testing, uh, which we can invest on. So that's basically what we talked about.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. That was great feedback. Up next is Cashmere Gardens. Do we have a representative from Cashmere Gardens?
I think I'll speak on this.
Oh.
So I think
Okay.
Oh, Deborah said okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Downey, if you want to, that's perfectly fine with me.
Deborah, please take it away.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I do what I'm told. Good evening, folks. We discussed in our small group the lack of facilities to be tested, the lack of protective equipment to be purchased in our neighborhood, the disregard for other people's health by patrons in stores. And also, Mr. Downey had pointed out not being able to be tested more than once, and that some people are being charged on their insurances as much as $3,000 for receiving a test that's supposed to be free. And so long-term, um, people need to be conscientious about, um, other people's health, that's one. And then we need to, we need to increase more areas where testing is concerned, because the one, uh, at Forest Brook Middle has been, uh, told that they've maxed out on their testing amounts, and there's so many more people to be tested. Because it's, this, it's becoming more rampant and more cases are coming about, and the unfortunate thing, our community members are elderly or at risk at this time. And so testing needs to be expanded to more areas. And that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Last but certainly not least is Magnolia Park, Manchester. Um, can the person, um, the volunteer, please identify themselves?
Anna and Juan Párras.
Anna and Juan Párras. And we are the director and co-director of a nonprofit organization that deals with what they call environmental justice. So having done that for the last 25, 26 years, we, we have a lot of information with our communities. But what I'm going to go through is obviously what's been presented and the issues we're dealing with right now.
Like, a lot of them sound the same.
Yeah. The, uh, one thing that, you know, the presentation again on the, on the survey, I think it provided us with a, a lot of good information. And the only question that I had with our group is that it would have been good if, if in all those questions, we had a baseline of how many individuals they actually responded to that question. Uh, for instance, like in Manchester, just to go to Manchester, it clearly indicated that that community is lacking face mask. Uh, you know, that's a pretty good percentage that we're seeing there. But again, overall, the, the survey didn't quite give me details on how many people have been asked those questions. It was like the need for face masks. Let's say they ask, uh, maybe 20 people. And, you know, over 50%, yeah, we need face masks. It's real, it's, to me, it's not like a real good survey, okay? Uh, but, but I'm not, I'm not going to go there, but I'm just saying that that it probably, we need a baseline as to how many people on each one of those questions are responded to that. Okay, so we can have a more clear situation about what's going on. Go ahead and talk about it. Okay, now, the, the issue also, of course, is that people that are already vulnerable, because they've been, they have other illnesses or other exposures, such as we mentioned, air toxins. Uh, we know that in Manchester, and this is studies, yeah, and Magnolia, we, we know this, but because the city of Houston has actually done studies where that community is already exposed to 12 hazardous air pollutants, seven of which are cancer-causing. That means that they're vulnerable already. And, and so now with the COVID crisis, it's even more, it's like a dumbo whammy that they're dealing with, because, you know, the air toxins.
We have, um, there wasn't, the closest site, it's, it's, there's an issue. It's a, it's a drive-up site, and that's HCC. We have a youth component to our program. They walked from Hartman Park, which is in Manchester, all the way to the, the testing site. It took them an hour and a half to get there. Because they're, they're trying to do this without a car. A lot of the community does not have transportation. The transportation is an issue, so we, we need testing sites within the, um, community. We suggested Hartman Park. We suggested St. Alfonso's Church. All of, all of these things, but also, it, when the, when the kids went over to the site, they were asked for IDs. A lot of the communities that we serve are, are immigrant communities. And they are, they don't trust when you're asking for where you live, your phone number, um, because of what's going on right now in the, in the era that we're living through. Um, so there has to be possibly, if these sites could, could require some other type of ID rather than a, um, a driver's license or something that's registered, whether it be a utility bill, something. But, but that's an issue in this community and the issue of trust. There's also a, an issue of language justice. A lot of the communities, uh, speak other languages, and, and in this two communities, it's heavily Spanish-speaking. So getting the information out in both languages is an issue. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I wanted also to just extend on what, uh, Anna said about immigrants. We know a lot of immigrants, and, and we see them every day. And we encourage them to take, you know, to go and get tested. And, and first, the first thing they tell me, look, we want to get tested. But once we give them our name, which is okay, but then they're going to ask you for an address. And later on, they're going to have this data. They decide to start, you know, doing raids in our communities. They got the information already. So they're very reluctant to go, because they don't really give but they would love to be tested. And so they wait till it grows, those kinds of population, because they didn't want to give you any, any information that a nice rate or anything, even a phone number. Phone numbers are traceable now, you know? So, so, so that's the, the need is out there, but we've got to figure out how to bring in immigrants without fear. Maybe later on, or, you know, six months in the future, they're going to be targets of deportation.
And, um, personal protective equipment, PE, um, that is in, that is an issue. That's something that is needed in both the communities that we serve. We're, we're here to help the city, um, get, get the word out. We try and push whatever we can, but this is something that, that, that's a need also. And as we've heard it from all the other areas, yes, it's testing and then transportation and everything else.
That's, you know, there's numerous things that we, you know, we could talk about, but those are our main concerns right now, is still how we can get actually our population to participate in testing. Uh, because, you know, one gets it, then you have to deal with tracing, and before you know it, how much of us can be exposed to it? And it's all because of the lack of trust and integrity, you know, they're looking for. Uh, and because they're trying to protect their personal lives. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for your time and, um, for that great feedback. We definitely will be sharing, um, the details of the survey and the number of respondents that we have for each of them as next steps. But, um, I want to thank you all for your participation and your enthusiasm, for working with us and, um, with these facilitated discussions. Next, I'm going to, pass the baton on to Director Shannon Bugs to talk about some of the next steps, um, from this town hall.
Thank you, everyone, for all of the hard work you did this evening. Mayor Turner asked you to give your all for this, and you did. This with the technical little glitches, because this is virtual, right? It's just like in real life, where there's always going to be a little something that didn't go quite right. And then the really tremendous feedback. I heard you loud and clear about the need for more testing sites in all of the complete communities that are represented here this evening. I also heard things that were very disturbing. I have been tested twice. Negative both times, very happy to report. Uh, but I've never been asked for my driver's license number. Um, I would really appreciate if we could get that information to know where that happened. Because that doesn't seem to be the protocol, but I need to find out more about that. What I can also share with you is that, um, we have already been working on this for our Houstonians who do not have all of the paperwork, uh, to be considered legal residents here in, um, Houston. And we have been very clear with, um, providing resources in Spanish, Chinese, Arabic, French, uh, and Vietnamese. This came out of our medical care subcommittee to making sure that people understand that getting tested and participating in contact tracing does not create a situation where you could be removed from this city or this state or this country. Doesn't get reported in that way. And, um, Mr. Párras, thank you for sharing that. Susan Rogers is letting me know that you were the person who, again, gave that information, and we'll check in with HCC about that. I know, I, I was, we will find out more information about it, because we do not want people to not go forward with this work. So, and if they're, all of the drive-through testing sites that everyone is saying is requiring photo ID, we need to figure out something, okay? Because we need to, more people to be connected. We will work with the health department to find out how we can make this a more, uh, comfortable situation for all. Let's see, um, you can go to houstonemergency.org/covid19translated to get the information about the, um, the COVID FAQs for undocumented immigrants. I know that addresses are needed in order for people to, uh, participate in the contact tracing if they do come up positive. So we'll have to work through some of that, and we can update the FAQs on this to reflect what the reality of the situation is, but also give reassurances in the language that, languages that are most spoken here in Houston, um, to get people more comfortable with this. Um, that's also an opportunity for our Public Health Education Subcommittee, uh, for the HER Task Force, as well as um, our marketing communications team to produce some pamphlets and things that can be distributed in areas, um, to help people have a greater comfort level with how the process is put together, what a testing, um, situation looks like, what you have to bring, why you have to bring it, what consequences there are for providing that information, okay? The other thing we heard is that you want, um, more survey results information. You want it to be more broadly. The survey, uh, filled out with more people in your areas. And so I do have good news to report on that, that we are already at work on, um, doing a second edition of the survey. That'll have more questions, um, and we can again distribute it through all of the complete communities as well as citywide. It was great, um, in just a five-day period to get the 10,000 responses that we did. Um, but we know that we can have, um, a greater response in a city, um, that's on its way to being the third largest in the nation. Uh, the other things that I heard were about the air pollution that has increased vulnerability to COVID-19. And, um, our chief resilience officer, Marissa Aho, is one of the leaders of the Health Equity Response Task Force. She leads the data and metrics, efforts, and she has been working on, uh, resilience districts within the complete communities. It's a concept that helps us to layer in many of the things that you all have been asking for in terms of strengthening your neighborhoods. Um, we're looking at, um, environmental corridors, uh, environmental resilience corridors in the Magnolia Park, Manchester area. We're looking at, um, cultural, um, corridors, resilience corridors, in some of the other areas as a way of building on, um, what you're asking for. And so the air quality issue has been discussed with the Climate Action Plan efforts, the Resilience Strategy, the Complete Communities Initiative, and we will continue to pull all of those resources together in order to come up with some solutions to work on those issues. Um, childcare remains a challenge, and I am also happy, uh, to report that we do, um, have our, Director of the Mayor's Office of Education, Juliette Stepetj, leading our Public Health Education Juliette Stepet, leading our Public Health Education Subcommittee for the HER Task Force. Um, and childcare is something that she and uh Chief Resilience Officer Marissa Aho worked on for essential workers. Um, so we will continue to work on that effort um to have some more solutions that we can provide as a covid nineteen response. And um, I also, Mr. Downing, I think, was the one who said um that there was some concerns about people being charged on their insurance up to $3,000 for a free test.
That's correct. That's seniors uh in Cashmere, they have gone to the UMC, UMMC site at Forest Brook. They reported to me that a few of them have gotten bills from their insurance that refused to pay for over $3,000.
So we need to find out more about that as well um and bring that information forward so we can find out what's going on there. Um, that actually gets us to some of the resources that are still, that are available. We are keeping track of where the free covid nineteen testing is. We need to know when something that has been advertised as free is not turning up as free. So please uh keep us informed on that so we can follow up. Um, but that's also at houstonemergency.org slash covid nineteen, these um are up on the screen now. And then we have free financial counseling um for folks. Uh, if they think something on that bill is strange that, you know, that, that's something to be able to say right immediately to a financial counselor and work through what is being asked of you and um getting assistance in um pushing back on some of that. So that's a houstontx.gov slash FEC. And again, it's free financial counseling, it's provided as a city service. Um, the City of Houston has um put resources into providing that. Um, and then we also have small business programs and resources that are available at our Office of Business Opportunities. And um we are looking to have more support in place soon for small businesses. So please keep a, a, a good check on where um the resources that are listed there. And I think uh that I'm just checking to make sure I hit all of the points. Yes, um, oh, one last thing. Yesterday, uh, the State of Texas extended the deadline um for the federal pandemic electronic benefit transfer program. This is a program that provides up to $285 per eligible child uh to pay for groceries. So children that were um eligible for free or reduced price lunch at uh school are also eligible to benefit from this. So on this slide, and we will have this posted on, um, I believe the um HER, the, the Houston covid nineteen recovery dot org website. Um, and we can also put this on the Complete Communities website, the presentation. Um, but you can uh use this link, hhs dot texas dot gov slash P as in Paul, E, elephant, B, boy, and T, Tom. Uh, where you can uh fill out the application. It's an online application, but there is a phone number that you can call to check on your eligibility and to also um work through the process of applying uh online. Um, the one thing that you will need to do with that application is include a valid phone number because they use that as a way of following up with you um if they have some questions about eligibility. But it is up to $285 per child. And the deadline for this is July 31st. We want to make sure that every child that in this greater Houston area that was eligible for these funds receives them. And I think there was a suggestion, I'm gonna just check the chat really quickly. Uh, I think we can uh put it on social media pages as well, I'll check on all of that for you as well. But the, I do know that this entire presentation has been run on Facebook Live at the HTV um Facebook page. So all of it should actually be there now on, on social media. So the last thing I'm going to remind everyone to do before we turn this over to um uh the Planning Department, I believe Director Margaret Wells Brown is going to talk a little bit more about the census because everything we're talking about is connected back to our um participation in the census. Um, but if you'll go back one slide, we just want to remind you all to please participate in your upcoming um Complete Communities meetings. Uh, we have the Strategies and Priorities Public Meeting for Aleaf Westwood. That will be uh Monday, July 13th. And then we'll have the final public meetings for all of the complete communities um starting on July 14th and through July 30th. We really need your participation in this conversation. Um, we need your feedback um from this evening and anything else to make sure that we're including all of that in those action plans and moving things forward. So um, and again, the census is one of the things that helps us to bring the resources to the City of Houston to make these action plans reality. Um, the funding that we're able to push forward at the city level comes discretionary funds. And a lot of that discretionary fund is based on our size as a city. So please, you want to make these action plans real, make sure that not only you fill out the census, because we did see a high participation level on the survey, but that your neighbors, your friends, your relatives, everybody fills out the census because we need every penny that we can get from the middle government to come into the City of Houston to help us move forward what our residents want to happen in our city. Sasha? Sasha Marshall was having a few troubles with um her mic earlier. Sasha, is everything okay now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. Um, thank you, Shannon, and thank you for everyone for coming tonight and the public officials that were here earlier. I'm here to talk to you about the census. I saw the survey earlier that Bloomberg had and it showed a wonderful participation from people taking the survey um for the census, just like uh Shannon Bugs just mentioned. But um we have to, the census response rates that are advertised on uh my2020census.gov, um, we have reports, self re- self-response reports. And I'm happy to say that Sunnyside of these five complete communities, Sunnyside has the highest census self-response rate at 58%. Um, after that comes Aleaf at 51%, uh Cashmere 50%, uh Magnolia, Manchester 43%, and Westwood at 40%. So thank you for those that have taken the census already. Um, if you have taken it, tell your friends, tell your family, tell your coworkers to also take the census. And if you haven't taken the census right now, let's social distance and take the census right now. I want to walk you through it. It only takes up to 10 minutes and that really depends on the amount of people you have in your household. As Shannon Bugs mentioned earlier, this is complete community, but your community will not be complete if you do not complete the census accurately. For every 1%, only 1%, if we miss 1% of Houstonians on the census, that is a loss of $250 million to the city and that is our fair share, our tax dollars that our, our fair share that rightfully belongs to us, okay? We don't want that money to get sent to Dallas, okay? Because it will just get re-appropriated to another city. So, social distance and take the census, you can go to my2020census.gov and take the census right now. Let's begin, next slide. So, census has shaped your future and that's exactly what we're talking about here. We know we're coming up on a huge voting season right now and that's every four years, but the census is every 10 years. It's that important and it's easy to take. It is safe, secure, and confidential. Your answers are protected. Um, only the statistical data that your answers produce will be uh available, okay? But none of the responses that identify you or your family members or your friends, they cannot be shared, not to any office, not even the President of the United States sees any of this data, only the, the stats that it produces, okay? And if the census worker shares it, that's a penalty of up to five years in prison and up to a $250,000 fine, okay? And all the census workers have a lifelong oath to protect your information. You can take the census in many different languages as you can see at the bottom. You can take it in 58, 52 different languages other than English. You can press start your questionnaire right now, next slide. Exactly, you choose the version that you want uh in your language. Next slide. So, this is your census ID, let's go back one. This is your census ID. If you received, and I'm sure you received mailers inviting you to take the census, there's a census ID at the top, okay? Next slide. I'll show you where to find it on this, on these forms, you can find your census ID that is tied to your address. That just kind of reduces the chances for errors, okay? But if you don't have it, if you don't have a census ID and maybe you didn't get it in the mail, that is okay because you don't have to have the ID to take the census, next slide. You can just click right up underneath there and say, I do not have a census ID. Next slide. So you have to say where you were living as of April 1st. April 1st is census day, that is where you are to be counted. So you select where you are to be counted, we are in the United States, so click the top, the top radio button, next slide. And they ask you for your address as of where you were living on April 1st. And where you were living April 1st, meaning you lived there for the majority of the calendar year. If you do not have a street address, you can click up underneath there as well. And they will, you will count, they, you will be counted, next slide. Ask you for your name and your telephone number. The only reason why they're asking for your telephone number is because if there are errors on your census responses, they will give you a call to correct errors. It is that important to have an accurate census. So that is the only reason why your phone number is being collected. They will only contact you if there are questions about your responses, next slide. So this is how you start, they're gonna ask you questions about who's in your household and how many people live there. Let's get started, click the start button and go to the next slide. And it's gonna ask you for the number of people who were living or staying with you at your address as of April 1st. So let's say um there was a, a, a pregnant uh lady in the household, okay? Or a child was coming into the household, but if they were not there on April 1st, do not count them. Please make sure you count your infants and your, and your babies and, and your kids. Um, zero to four uh years old, that's a traditionally undercounted population. Make sure you count the kids because we love the kids, next slide. You need to add another person to your household, click another person. If you need to remove, you go ahead and remove, next slide. See how easy this is? Okay, if they're asking if there are any additional people that is not already listed on your census so far, okay? And that's only just to make sure that everyone is counted accurately where they lived on April 1st, next slide. So they're asking, collecting information here about the type of house that you lived in as of April 1st. Was it owned by you or owned by someone else? Did you rent it? Did you occupy it without payment of rent? That is to collect housing data, next slide. So it says yet again, of the people who lived at this address, who owned, were they here as of April 1st? It is just, I know it might seem repetitive, but it has to, we have to ensure that there is an accurate and complete count of people, next slide. Next slide. They're asking for date of birth here and correct age. As soon as you enter that information, and again, it reminds you to verify the age as of April 1st. If the child is less than one years old, do not enter an age, you'll enter zero, that's for to catch all the infants, next slide. And so we're checking here to get information on race and ethnicity. So you have to check if you are of the Latin community. Um, they have different prompts here and it's a very extensive list to try to include all of the ethnicities that are here in the United States, next slide. This is this part that's catching the race slide, okay? And there's, uh, like I said, you go through and you select the race that you identify with. And you can pick the box that best describes you, next slide. So for the final question, we're almost done, okay? See, it wasn't, didn't take that long and it wasn't that hard. So it's gonna ask you for one final question just to make sure that your census responses are accurate, next slide. So, they want to make sure not to count people twice in two different areas. So yet again, they're saying, people who usually stay with you, do they stay someplace else? We know a lot of students were in college earlier and had to come back home. So they want to make sure not to count people in different areas, next slide. You click that final button and submit questionnaire. You can also go back and edit if you want to make sure your answers are accurate, and please do. And then after that, you submit your questionnaire and you are counted. It is so important to be counted because we have to become the third largest city in the nation. We are on track to beat Chicago, let's beat them. If you don't care anything about the money for the schools that we need, about the road improvement, about the medical care, the disaster recovery assistance that we get, that the census data helps us get these funds, you gotta care about beating Chicago in population. So please, 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 take the census, make sure it's accurate, make sure it's complete, and make sure you count because that's how our elected officials represent us here and in DC. That's how we get money for to complete our communities. That's how we make a better Houston and we keep Houston strong, thank you everybody.
Thank you Sasha, we really appreciate it, thank you, yes. Um, and then we also had from Sean Haley uh to the group that um there are some, as he said, cool strategies being used um by uh food pantries. Uh, where while people are waiting, the staff are providing a QR code from a safe physical distance with the link directly to the census for clients to complete. Clients can use cell phone cameras to launch it. Um, so that might be as, an assistance to us in helping getting out the word. And then I think the Shar Gross also had a comment, my chat just all went into, oh. And there is a census car parade that you can join, you can contact. Um, and she provided information about that from the Fifth Ward CRC, thank you Shar. So, there's a lot of great information, everybody can share back with the city for us to help push out the census. Um, if you have more questions about the Mayor's Health Equity Response Initiative and Task Force, and I do want to thank um the Task Force members that were present on the phone tonight, on the chat email town hall. Um, we had Jody Berenstain uh from Interfaith Ministries, Pam Wells from Region Four, Dr. Kathy Flanagan, um, who is Chair of the Medical Care Subcommittee, Dr. Asim Shaw, who is Chair of the Public Health Education Committee, and Dr. Iresha Hilliard, who is Chair of the Faith Community Leaders Subcommittee. Uh, all of them participated this evening and we really do appreciate that. Um, I do know that another big takeaway is that in addition to just the general calls for more testing sites in the complete communities, we are going to um have uh checks done to see about having the higher D community center uh evaluated for a testing site, Hartman Park in Manchester also to be evaluated as a testing site, and Saint Alphonsus Church in Manchester also being evaluated. If anyone has any additional um recommendations of testing sites that are in our complete communities, please let us know. And Charles Cave has said to everybody, don't forget to go out and vote and early voting is underway now. So please do your civic duty. Um, part of this is our local engagement. We also have Pastor Max Miller, who has also been uh on our uh Faith Community Leaders Subcommittee. And um I have to say that the Faith Community Subcommittee has been doing an excellent job of working with um sanctuaries across the city to come up with best practice reopening, um but also helping them to stay connected to their congregations while we have been following stay-at-home. So um it has truly been a great uh coming together of folks. And that's what we need you all to do, is commit to continuing this long-term engagement. When these final public meetings happen, that is not the end of the complete communities process. That's just the ending of the part where we're talking about what we're gonna do. We are then going to get done what we said we were going to do. And that's gonna require all of us. The Planning Department is the department that continues with the ongoing engagement. Department of Neighborhoods and the Mayor's Assistance Office sit, um, helps with all of that as well. They are working on long-term engagement. The Complete Communities Office works on doing facilitation among the different departments because every department at the city. Has a responsibility to the residents in moving forward some portion of those action plans, right? We facilitate the work, there are implementing partners around the city that are also part of it, we've been engaging in conversations with them, so they are very aware of what you as residents have asked for and what you'd like to see done. But the most important advocates and actors in this process are the residents because it's your action plan. It's what you've said you wanted, we need your assistance in helping to attract developers and investors into your neighborhoods. And when we're able to tell people that this is something that came directly from you all, that this is what you've asked to do, this is what you want to support, that makes all the difference. And so we can continue to facilitate and work together to move this forward, but we need you to stay engaged. Thank you so much for staying on past the allotted time, we will also look, add that to it, it sounds like we have a lot more conversations we need to be having, so thank you, everyone, and good night.